To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a motion to adopt the amendments again. So, second motion, favor, second, in favor. We both, and none. I have a motion to adopt the amendments again.
I have a motion to stop.
Second.
Okay.
Any other favor? I want to consider those both. A public comment period, citizens may address the council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda out of respect of the council. Another than attendance, please let me comment in three minutes with state name and address for the record. Do we have any public comments? There are none. Move down to department reports, see Scott's not here. Dennis is not here. Yes?
I don't really have anything to add, so I'll put my report there. We might have found a dump truck we'll want to look at pretty soon, a five yard dump truck. I'll get some pictures. Replace seventy-two Ford. Also has a snow pile on it.
Yes?
That smell around here.
No. Hello, you taking care of Daryl?
Uh, nothing much, it's not a general report. Truly Water and Folk of Red Rock, got some good chemical analysis coming back for their company. So we're working out some treatment options for that. Some of the organics is going to be able to survive. Other additives received.
Now, Minister Shell, do you have anything to add?
Just because we need so many fat people and so much.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on down to whole business. I've got here two different letters regarding the traffic on Southside. Do you know anything to come up on that?
I haven't heard a thing. What I would like to do is, we're gonna have a transportation plan review. That's basically ODOT show, they pay for it, they join the scope. But I was gonna, see if we could get a little bit of time spent down there around the schools, see if we can clear some other options.
Okay.
And one of the reasons we're in through ODOT as well is, as I presented the last meeting, you know, related to the crosswalks and stuff. They would have a good pulse on the ADA issues, because I think, it looks like, I think the most cost effective issue would be some kind of a gate going across. We just want to make sure that that would get a side race comparison to the facilities act. But I think that's, we don't permanently close it, but where it's really barred is that there has been some pull through issues. I can saw one a few weeks ago where somebody just went right through one of the, whatever, so.
They had one today.
Yeah, I didn't stop, I sent them all to work, I feel like.
Yeah.
And I have talked to Susan about the gate, she's fine with that idea, she just wants something done soon.
Right.
And that shouldn't, as far as ADA go, there should be an issue almost posted at the intersections.
Right.
Prior than coming down the street.
Right, and that's kind of the, that's kind of the big one, but I think that's gonna be the most logical one is, a really large chain link gate that kind of swings out barred with really clear signage or anything else. It's done in a lot of other jurisdictions, like you can see a few others in Oregon, I know it's said quite often in California, so that is probably the most cost effective. And then if you amend our ordinance to close to, that feels closing that street for certain periods of time, we can just amend it to close the, add sidewalks to it as well. Simple.
Yeah, the sidewalks and.
And the street, yeah.
There are, there's two good places to do that. I could probably, with Daryl, maybe on that showing.
Right.
Where I talked to Susan.
And so I think that's probably the most logical approach, I think from legal standpoint, to do that. That way, we still maintain right away scenes of that nature, but then are much more clear about something going through.
So, so do we need, maybe a follow up on this?
I can give it to Daryl and you can go take a look at it.
The school, and just check on, I know tomorrow, the schools, we need that before, I believe, to try to walk around the buildings and stuff. The borders, and so, we need to get with them, the administration real quick at the same time. Check it out.
I'll talk to Daryl after the meeting, and we can talk to him. There's two places on there that I seen we can do that, where we could use, utilize existing industrial fields. And it still leaves the front of the school open to whoever needs the vehicles and any kind of response.
Okay, why don't you follow up with that, too? On, on that ordinance, Jake, Sam, Lee, for living, practically clean wildlife, um, I don't think we've come up with anything on that difference.
Darwin, you were gonna reach out to Mergs, talking with their experience, if then, were you able to find anything out?
Yeah, just, I mean, there was a couple of news articles that, that, um, uh, looked at, they just, nothing was happening with it, so, um, you know, just remember.
And I think they were one of the first communities we go to, so, um, we've followed suit, probably, but, you know, I think it'd be nice to have a little more background on how it gets into the, we talked about this before, and there's, there's been actually a ton of the calls and stuff.
Yeah, I still, I still think you guys do have the option, I mean, you could knock down a fine to like fifty bucks, it's, it's prerequisite to getting ODFW involved. And you can put it in there.
So is it not correspondence from ODFW number, or is that just from a law state?
That's just from a law states.
I thought it was like, talk to me here.
Yeah, and I've also looked at the statute that refer, that references, that that's.
And he agrees, I mean, he concurs that that is needed.
Right.
I mean, he's, so, there are other communities that have done wildlife things, you know, since my law perspective, turkey's was a major issue in their process. I'm not sure if you're interested in looking at something like how they've been doing that, or how that's been affected.
The only one, the only thing I can recommend to everybody is, I think, any, any kind of durable or anything like that needs to get to ODFW. Because any municipality that's trying to do their own kind of private stuff, really put a big part on your back. If it goes to the state agency and the state agency takes action, and you do your preface of let them act, and, let's say they do their study, it comes out that there are an overabundance of gear, then they're liable for whatever they do. I would not suggest kind of take that on, because that can get you sued by some of the major environmental lab secrets. So you want, again, the bill that authorizes technical coal or a removal effort is done, negotiated pretty tightly between a lot of the different environmental stakeholders and the state. And so that really is the rubric you guys want to stay within, you don't want to try to do anything privately, because it gets really difficult. You don't want to be in the situation of getting out there on your own versus ODFW, if they do something, and somebody wants to go after that, that's their business at that point.
Which I get, but I'm not in passing about too often if I don't have to, and, and I get that, I mean, I know you come from a cautionary background, we're more of them, but I hope. But, I'm wondering if it's something like, I mean, just thinking out loud, talking to John over at ODFW, you know, let's say they do a study and they say, okay, we've got a, um, we've like, are we bound to be in that? Because I know it does talk about working with agencies, including the town, including the state's state department, it's not just ODFW, it's a collaborative. But that's, is that something that maybe you guys want to know before passing something like that? Because I'm, I'm even kind of curious if we are held to what they come up with in their study, or their findings.
That I'm not sure of, I, I know that that operates as an option, and like, and most likely, it would, they don't do a lot of relocation anymore. Mostly what they do is trapping coal, that's the, that is what this looks like, because honestly, if you bring the animal a couple hundred miles away, they come back. Because deer are very, just like, other, other animals, bears, things like that, they, they know where their home range is, so, that is what you're looking at. So understand, if ODFW does get involved, you are probably most likely looking at euthanize situation, that's just kind of the, and again, want to make sure a licensed trapper or somebody along those lines is used. Because if you have issues with its archery, somebody over not being a very good aim, I mean, it just, it's more, it's usually trapping is kind of the, usually the preferred method of doing that, so, that's kind of what you're looking at. So if that's something that you guys are not interested pursuing, then don't, that's the logistics which we're looking at. And again, that still assumes that they, I don't know what their study parameters are, and I don't know exactly how that works, so it would be, you might want to talk to some of the other, other small towns that have looked at that, see if that really is, explains that this whole thing could be a complete waste of time. I mean, you could get a general idea that, you know what, none of these studies have ever borne out that there's too many deer under ODFW standards, so if this thing, if this whole thing could be a waste of time, so.
Or, or even if he has knowledge, maybe of other communities that have actually, since they get, you know.
Yeah, in other words, I, I just ask, I would ask the local rep a question, when this has been done, has anything ever happened in these areas? Any communities that have done this, has it actually resulted in ODFW being able to actually do anything?
Okay.
And I think they should be able to answer it.
Maybe, maybe I'll try to call up to them then, I think, and bring you guys back some more information, because, I mean, as I think through, is that something I'm wondering, and do we have the option of trying relocating first? You know, like two days before hunting, that would be great. Because, you know, they're kind of desensitized a little bit, but, and then I'll report back in a couple weeks.
All right, let's move on. Well, let's turn to new business. First thing on there, Lake County Mentor Program, request for a family swim pass.
Yeah, that's me, I'm Daphne from the Mentor Program. We are having our annual fundraiser coming up in April, and we were hoping that the town would donate a family swim pass, so we could use as a raffle item or auction item at our fundraiser.
I move that we're pushing out a pass, uh, for the weekend mentor program, I'm just questioning.
Motion, favor, second, in favor?
Aye.
We both, there are none, you got your pass?
Thank you. Daphne, if you want, I'll have time to get it ready for you, it'll be ready tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, move on down, Lake County Fair Roundup application, Lakeview tax grant applications, thirty thousand dollars, Jerry Evans and Judy Graham. I'll move my table over there, so, I'll just, you stand right there.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I'm blocking the camera. Sorry, that's fine.
I, I really, uh, don't know what you want of me, other than I'll just do a quick explanation of what we're asking for. But before I do that, I would also like to just introduce to you all of the Roundup people that are here today. Very much interested in our grant application, our president, Todd Muller in the back, Joseph Utley in charge of entertainment, Jerry Evans, who helped, he and I wrote the grant. Clark Maxwell, past president, Jody Graham, very involved in everything that has to do with Roundup. And Ace and Rosa Felder, who are also very involved with signage and all sorts of Roundup activities. Basically and quickly, we are asking for thirty thousand dollars to put towards a headliner, a concert performer each year, with a base figure starting at fifty thousand dollars. We would like to get somebody in here every year at fifty thousand dollars or more. Um, we know that it's a huge big weekend for Lake, Lakeview and Lake County, we know that we draw a very large crowd, and we fill all the, all of the lodging in town, and all of the restaurants, and you name it, and we're doing that. We are asking that, um, the town take a really serious look at how, you know, their, uh, their lodging tax, and seeing, to see if you have the funds to help support us. We would like this to be an annual grant, but this wasn't so stated in the application, um, and it's, it's pretty much matching. We, um, last year, we spent well over, I think there, well, I do know that the application says that we spent over thirty thousand dollars, and that really is a little bit low. We had a few other things that we added to that that we didn't mention. Um, Jerry can certainly talk to you about all of the numbers, Joseph can talk finances, Joseph can talk to you about the attendance. And Todd, our president, I would like to give Todd an opportunity to address what we're asking for also.
We appreciate you guys meeting with us today or allowing us to present this. Um, so last year, it was closer to sixty-five thousand, by the time we pay booking fee, and so the headliner was a fifty thousand dollar act. By the time you pay a booking fee, stage fee, sound, uh, it was about sixty-five thousand. So while the application shows will be matching thirty thousand out of Roundup funds as well, it'll be closer to a total of about sixty-five thousand, so it's about five thousand short. Any other questions you guys might have?
Twenty-four ten.
Last year was twenty-seven hundred and fifty, is that right, Joseph?
That was just the concert alone, um, ticket wise through the entire Roundup, and that's just the two rodeo performances, the concert, the derby, we sold, uh, nine thousand three hundred and eighteen tickets.
Our fear with not keeping this main, you know, you kind of have a threshold there, if you're below the fifty thousand, you don't really know who you're gonna get. They might be an up and coming, and they don't have any big hits between the time we book them, which is about now, and later day weekend. Or if you get a has been, we're not seeing our ticket sales hit those numbers that we've seen. Um, you know, we've had great success with, oh, what, Old Dominion, the Band Perry, and when we have these mainstream that are in the charts coming to Lakeview, we're seeing our ticket sales. But it's a big risk to step up this time of year when we don't know what our sponsorship money is, um, that we put out, that we might not get back. It could be a big loss to the Roundup if, if we don't have additional funds to try to help bring those acts in.
Do you have your peak sales, like last ten years, what your highest sales for one year was, for just the concert?
For just the concert, last year, I think, is probably gonna be the largest, because it was our hundred year. Um, so if you throw that out, do you know what would have been the year before?
Old Dominion, then the Band Perry.
We're right there the same, about twenty-seven hundred.
Are you guys operating in, in, you know, the red or black, do you have these? I mean, I don't know what you guys would go with.
But it depends on the year, was that, yeah.
So, this last year, we were in the black with the, uh, the hundred year anniversary. One of the things the Roundup did is they put a lot of effort in reaching out to the prior courts and the prior presidents and, and bringing them in, and that was a real success. And so this year, we, we are, we did have, uh, a year that was in the black. Prior to that, we've been, it's been very marginal, we, the year before that, we were actually in the red, we've been right around the break even. And so, like Todd said, stepping up on a, on a concert like this and putting that, that was a, that was a real tough call for the board, uh, because we're having to do that early and commit to that. And if that doesn't, you know, uh, doesn't work, that really puts us in jeopardy.
What are the ticket prices normally?
Um, reserved, uh, in the box are about forty-five, and that's the best seat possible, if you don't want to be down in the crowd. Reserved up in the seating is forty, and then thirty-five generally.
So thirty-five?
Yeah, forty-five, forty, thirty-five.
What?
And that's just for the concert, the rodeo is different, derby is different.
Because derby, you guys don't take funds from, correct? Isn't that the high desert and, okay.
Something, something, we're leaving or something.
You will raise your, now the school honor society.
We, we do get a percentage, we do get a percentage of the derby, but they, the high desert cruisers are the ones that put that on.
So if you have twenty-seven hundred at the top, so, at thirty-five dollars, I mean, that's what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah.
Ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars?
Correct. Those funds also, I mean, so we put on, not just the concert, but the rodeo, we have added money for the rodeo that we have to front, um, which is five thousand events, six events, six events. Um, the ranch rodeo we put on, the local team roping, so, while we're just going after funds for that, the rodeo a lot of times will carry what our expenses are for the entire weekend, starting on Thursday. All the way to Monday, so, it's just kind of, that's the easy thing that we can earmark, this is, this is the major break for the weekend, and so that was the easiest thing to go after funds, though.
Can you speak real quick to tourism end of it? Making an investment like that with the dollars that they bring in already, is, they're using a lot of their money for advertising, and they're also being invested in by Travelism Oregon. This last rodeo they did, um, had commercials, which also advertised our concert, and they were just representing in Las Vegas at the National Rodeo Finals to a huge group of people. If they could find out their concert and have a big headliner, or at least a bigger headliner, a solid headliner that people know, that could attract a whole different audience. They may not even be coming for the rodeo, but since we're so rural, they'll automatically stay the night, which will then contribute again to the hotel tax. They'll also potentially stay for another show and catch the rodeo or the derby, and in turn create another night of a hotel stay. So I think using the concert, especially since we don't have a big festival, like a lot of other towns where they bring in big names, this is our really big headliner. So if they use that to the best advantage really of the whole community, we could be dumping even more money into those hotel tax funds, and thus creating even more attention to Lake County as a whole and Lakeview.
So last year, Darwin, on ticket sales, uh, for the concert alone, seventy thousand six hundred and eleven. The year prior in eighteen was thirty-six thousand three hundred and change, so that's the difference between the two. Also with, I mean, we had a lot better concert last year, stepped up our headliner. And then the rodeo, it never makes money, by the time we do, the stock fees, added money, I mean, we need that, the income from the, or from the concert carries over to help float the whole weekend. Last year was the first year we bumped it up to fifty thousand, we took a leap of faith that it was gonna work with our hundred year. We don't have that this year, so, kind of being cautious, but we, we need to send that fifty thousand, get a headliner.
I know we have some other lodging tax grants on the line that we haven't finished, uh, maybe decisions on sort of kind of, um, in the process of hiring the shell, I think, we tabled one of them, maybe two of them. Uh, so I would like to see if we can, uh,
The fairgrounds.
Make our decision on the other ones, because they're, I believe, sizable as well.
What other ones you talked?
The fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds is still up.
That was the only one, the other one I've had. Okay.
They'll see these.
Okay.
And we need to see how much money we have in fund also.
Well, I put, I had Donna print those up, but I have the general fund one here, but that's the lodging tax in there, and I don't quite understand. I think that last line is what's come in so far for two thousand nine hundred.
Yeah, but it's shown the total for the year, but it doesn't show what's actually specifically in the fund.
No, well, that's for, that's for, so, I wanted the actual figure to show.
Yeah, there's zero on all the expenditures, so.
So there's no, you're in condition there.
Do we, do we know what the difference is, like, for some of the, um, I mean, it sounds like the group mainly wants to go with more headlining people, but currently paying upon the charts and stuff like that. I mean, um, probably years ago, I went up to a call in, uh, up in Hardy County, and it was amazing, and, um, I don't know, um, you know, the price difference in getting some of you that's, you know, in the whole time, or, which is something new.
Um, so I, I think I know what you're talking about, um, Phil Basser, up in Hardy County.
He was there, yeah, a different year, too.
Okay, well, they come.
Long Ray was there, I went for that one, too, but yeah, Phil, I didn't think of that.
They, they come in at roughly anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand, I mean, Clint Black's in the, that's sixty thousand. The one thing that I know, if you, if you want to reach out to Hardy County, you can see how, how broke they're going in that concert.
So one other question I have is, how, how many can the grandstands hold? I mean, obviously there's an angle where it kind of hit, you know, you're out, or there's some mistakes, but, but how many is ideal for showing up?
Yeah, about the, the seating in the grandstands is about three thousand, and that's airline seating, and I'm not talking about the new airline, it's, it's pretty tight. So with the numbers, but, in, in the concerts, we're able to open up that down on the track.
What's your fire allowance?
Um, in there, I believe it's about three hundred, but we don't have it roped off or anything, so there's no, like, the emergency exit is onto the track and out through the rodeo grounds.
Max where you'd be at like thirty-three hundred, roughly?
Yeah, thirty-five.
I'm gonna say it's the.
One of the other questions I know, like, during the hundred year Roundup, we had, uh, you know, I heard, you know, six months prior, even more than that, even almost up to a year before, all hotels were already booked during that weekend. So, we know exactly how many rooms we have in town, because I mean, I mean, it might be nice to bring in more people, and I'm not saying I oppose this at all, but if we're maxed out, we can't actually, I mean, a concert, you know, saturated, I should say, we just don't have more rooms for people, trying to build more hotels. Just curious on.
So your Best Western has thirty-eight rooms, um, that's the most in town, and they do fill up, all of your hotels do fill up for those basically three straight days. Um, in town limits, I would say you probably have under, or maybe right at two hundred, two, twenty-five, two thirty rooms. Um, but you also have a lot of opportunity to think out of the box when you have a growing event like this, and a thriving event like this. Um, you have Airbnbs that also collect, uh, county hotel tax, um, that you could be in on as well for a town. And you don't want to ever, you know, I wouldn't say, um, stamp on growth for one of your biggest events. Uh, we get county hotel tax, the Chamber, we call it our Roundup check, and we get less than the seventy percent, we get around fifty-two to fifty-four percent from the county, and it's the largest it's been, um, in the last couple of years. This last, um, after the hundred, it was, I think, around thirty-six thousand dollars. So essentially, that's even less than what you're fully collecting, you would just be turning around and giving them back that money to grow and, um, help this event thrive. But you have a lot of out of the box opportunities, and also being the town, you should be looking at bringing in other hoteliers and expanding, um, that hotel option to bring in and also put out that money into the community. You have great opportunities to bring in other hoteliers, the ski show and other events going on in town. Um, I think it would pay off to show them a growing event, a lot of those applications like to know how many people and if you are at max with these events, before they really start looking at growth. But there's lots of opportunity with Airbnb and filling up, um, great stays that are off the beaten path even, um, during Roundup weekend to in turn bring in more money for the TLT.
I think we stayed booked pretty much all summer this year with Red Rock and Solar Project and rodeo.
Is Red Rock paying hotel tax, or are they exempt from that?
If the stay is longer than a certain number of days.
Longer than thirty days, then they don't pay hotel tax after that point, so.
So you're not paying that from that.
Yeah, that, that's from Red Rock, but all these subcontractors that come in, Red Rock is not paying for them, because they rent a lot of houses to them, and they're staying in hotels. And I know two of the hotels, Best Western, the one, they're pretty much full all summer.
And, yeah, people are here somewhere, so.
Because people are not handling their, calling us to rent houses for short term, because we couldn't.
I think the Roundup, growing and thriving and advertising outside of Lake County, that should be their job, and hoteliers and bringing in new business, is really kind of, probably gonna fall onto seeing those events thrive and succeed, and using our economic development to the town.
Can I say something, too, on, just on the, the finance side of it, is that, with the rodeo, really the way we have to look at it, it's, the whole weekend is that package with the rodeo, the, the concert, the destruction derby, everything makes that whole weekend. And putting on that rodeo, our, our, we're negative significantly, uh, the day we opened that, we opened that rodeo. For instance, the year before last, our rodeo intake was thirty-six thousand dollars, our total fees that came in for rodeo attendance, our PRCA sanction and our added money was thirty-six thousand three hundred dollars, plus a forty seven, forty-two thousand dollar stocking expense. So we are forty-seven thousand dollars negative when we opened up the door, and so we're relying on the concert, we're relying on that whole package to make the. Concert, relying on that whole package to make this thing work for us. And the reason it worked this last year was because of the hundred year anniversary. And and we took like they said, we really took a leap of faith and it was uh we had to do some soul searching on to really. Whether we could commit to taking that extra amount on that concert and and it did pay off. But uh that whole package is that whole weekend, we've gotta have everything work for us. To us the last several years before the hundred year anniversary, we would get down to the very end and and we were right at a break even level for showing showing a loss. And so that we were trying to to get this so we can step that up and and be a little bit more consistent and not. You know, I guess not have to take that risk here or or maybe minimize that risk.
I I do want to say that it's it's there's thousands of large dollars in the community are able to attract at this point. Because people do stay and even can average it out that. Her person that ended up staying number nine is about two hundred dollars per person that stays here. And we don't know who's coming back. So it really is a good opportunity for pressing. Grab that momentum and push through the other parts of the country here and really just sort of sneak into that.
Yeah, I I'm behind it a hundred percent, like you see the majority, right, the front's in the middle.
Okay.
And folks, I'm gonna ram one other thing that I've just seen that the applications have come in. We don't have that many big events that go on late throughout the summer.
No.
And so you guys, people, I mean outside of a couple of larger asks, you guys haven't been having applications knocking down the door for these funds. So that's been kind of the and and that's just the nature of the size of town, you you really. Only have a few events that can do this and money obviously needs to get used for those purposes, so. Unless the town's looking at, let's set a big project, it wants to do itself and I that's true, it's a decision to do that. This is the type of thing to look at, cause this does go quarterly within tourism guidelines.
Well, I think it's such a great opportunity too, cause you guys could start doing, you know, video and having people do that, which is a pretty. You can like probably everybody to take a picture. Right, and stream it through your social media channels and and certainly we have a Facebook page, y'all have a Facebook page and. Really it does help to build that momentum together to start promoting more than just roundup. But everything that Lakeview does offer is amazing.
I'd like to also bring in, I I think somewhere we we get lost with the the fair portion of it as well. You know, we you know, we're in a time and day and age where all your county fairs are struggling to just exist. I mean it's every year it's whether our first is going to, you know, Modoc County is going to even have their fair. And if we think about would our fair be able to sustain itself without the roundup? And I don't.
I don't think it would.
I don't think it would, you know, but having the roundup and the derby and um. The concert, all of those things working together allow the fair to survive allows. You know, just makes it a bigger weekend for someone who's coming through. And I think when we we worked, my husband and I worked at the um booth in Las Vegas. And a lot of the people that we go with were looking for new destinations and places to go. And going somewhere that wasn't gonna be a single event. Um you know, they either didn't like the rules and regulations of where they're going, ATV they brought up and were saying, oh. You know, then Travel Southern Oregon stepped in and they said, let's show you our trails, let's show you what we have in this. And so it was a great reaching out for Lake County as a big package and. We have, again, the fair brings another part to it. If you have a family, it isn't just about a rodeo where the kid sits, you know, they have something else to do with you.
But more each F A, I think those are the first supporters.
Right.
I enjoy them, I just love responsibility down there. Like I said, I I think it's a great idea if we just have something else that was on the line for a significant decision or application as well.
So I don't I don't believe. But remember that you just were given, that's from Todd, it says what's what we have in the fund right now.
That's what we have right now.
Um. I don't know if you had.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if you have.
I I don't know.
No, we haven't spent our name. Remember, uh you approved uh what was it, twenty thousand?
But there's no quarterly experts, two or three are quarterly.
But she's just now starting to get the quarterly. Did I ask her about?
We can talk about that at a different time, we don't see talk about that now.
She's just starting to get it.
Okay, we'll talk about that at a different time, we can just see where we're at because they don't know that that's a true member.
Like then I would like to table it. I'll take a motion to table it down. Well, I I don't know how much, how long they have, that's the problem.
How much time do you have, Todd?
We need to get a bulletproof, we've got an offer in already. I mean we had to take that, we had to again.
Okay, let let us verify what we have in that account and I what we have going on and we'll get back to you guys.
I I have two weeks on that.
Two weeks?
Two weeks, okay.
We'll have an answer for you in two weeks. Before.
We made it down to twenty eighth. Oh, the two one. Why don't you click to the president's face or.
Get this figured out.
Yeah, you guys can just add to a work session or regular set, a special session just for this, where you guys can make a decision, I'll give you what's appropriate.
Just looking at our budget to give you a little perspective of what we're dealing with money wise. Um it looks like we budgeted around ninety-three thousand dollars for the year of which is seventy percent of of the lodging tax collected. Um so you know of that, you know, the asking is if you're sorry thirty, you know, each year. Um that that you know takes care of most of the fifty percent that we could need to spend on on larger projects. So um you know where. I I'm definitely like I know with both before like curious on how the numbers played for the last ten years on. On you know ticket sales and this and that and who's all coming, what was the cost? I mean, I don't need to get down in the weeds on all that, but it's you know, it was last year kind of a you know. Because of the hundred year, a really great year money wise, yet we spent more on on you know who came, but. Isn't realistic to think that we're gonna have more years just like that and that's gonna. You know, cost us, you know, and we're gonna keep breaking even roughly, I mean if we're talking about raising ticket prices. You know, what does that mean, I mean I don't know the last time ticket prices were raised, but um just some other things that that um. Be nice to consider in this um house.
So ticket prices were raised year before last and we feel like we're kind of at the top end of what a family of four can come to the concert and afford to do. We don't wanna get outside that realm, you can go to Portland and pay or a family of ten or twelve. We can go Portland and pay, you know, seventy or eighty dollars for a ticket, they don't bat an eye, but that's not the market group of what we're trying to target in Lakeview. And so we're trying to keep those tickets affordable. And if you want, we can go back and list out who our headlining act was and what our ticket sales were for the last. I don't know how long we have those records.
I would like to see that, like five, ten years of the year.
Your demographics are are changing, you're investing in the future of the event, right? This is your biggest money making event in Lakeview, so you're investing in when we bring a bigger act. More people will come for the bigger act instead of someone they have not may have heard of. Van Perry and Old Dominion weren't as high as they are now when we got them here, correct? So no one, a lot, the majority of people did not know of Old Dominion like they do now or of Van Perry like they do now. So they got them at a lower price when they were up and coming. So you can roll the dice on that and hope that someone turns out big and and Joseph does a fantastic job with doing that, but there have been some misses in that as well. So we have had some, you know, the guys in skinny jeans that just didn't turn out, even though they had their best pair on just to work. So investing in your biggest event of the whole year, every year, the town investing in that when the town. Completely benefits from it every single year, no matter if they have a bad concert or not, trying to to up that. Ticket sales from ten years ago isn't really gonna show you what their potential is. They're a growing event, they've become PRCA, they've just come back from Vegas, they have a wonderful relationship with Travel Oregon, Travel Southern Oregon. They're doing commercials, they have brochures, they're constantly advertising. I feel like a good portion of your thinking should should gear towards how they're marketing their event already. To bring in people to our community. That opens doors, just like Rosa said, on ATVing and mountain biking and ski hill and all of that, that could pay off. And even rodeo, if they're coming straight for the concert, people in Joseph's age group are the ones that plan their summers by concerts. I mean, this is not something that doesn't exist, this happens, they go to concerts. Darwin goes to Harney to see who's going there, I mean, we all traveled to see a concert when we were in Vegas, a lot of the rodeo people went and saw concerts. I mean, this is not something that we're gambling on is it is might work out, I mean, this is a proven, it's proven, people go to concerts.
Well, right right now, yes, I understand what you're saying there all the way around. Cause we need to find out just what actually we have left in that account before we can do anything.
And that's the main thing, I mean I I'm behind it.
No, no, actually, no.
I I have a.
And you have to address the application that came in prior to this. Like well, we can't decide anymore now.
But yeah, we'll we'll, we have a work session next Tuesday, we'll discuss this and we'll get back to you guys.
If if for for Todd, one of you guys gets that information though, or what, next Tuesday, you said? For working.
Yeah, we can have two.
If or drop off, yeah, Michelle.
Okay, I think one thing that you guys need to consider too is in the last two years that we've gone with the advertising, we've gone outside our normal threshold and started like the radio. The TV commercials and stuff that are and he knows, Joseph knows the demographics of where we're pulling these people from. And we never had that before, we were just shooting in the dark, we were putting ads on uh K-Lad and uh Clameth and then we were putting ads in Ben. We didn't know where these people were coming from, but now we do with all this ticket technology and tracking, we can tell where these people are coming from. So and we're spending money on all of this and if you look at the parking lot, you'll see what we've done in the last four years. I mean there you can't even find a place to park down there now, so.
This is the last three years I've been here, this problem's growing up here.
Yeah, so I think I think it's, you can look at numbers, but you gotta look at the people that are coming for the whole weekend, so.
So we'll table this till.
Next Tuesday. Well, yeah, find out what we get. So on, most ladies second, please.
Hi.
Uh let's move to. Resolution nine nine sixty-nine. Uh the town like to go to the main account of work and federal and where else several designers are no longer on the town council or association. Give the town and need to be removed and new measures need to be added. Now therefore, let's be resolved by the town, county, and council, U.S. public. All names need to be removed from signature cards and banking information. Dave Daryl Anderson and Jeffrey Marshall. All meeting need to be added to the signature cards and banking information, Michelle Berry. Second January fourteenth twenty twenty. Your motion? I'll make a motion to through a resolution nine sixty-nine, nine sixty-nine. Most ladies second, please. Um Rob Ford, Miller, Big Council Center. Like I want to rob Michelle, I guess, and try to do something different than here, something like what the county's got. Over there, the rest are all stored up here elevated. And we go soon. Anyway, Rob gave us a bit, you guys should have been there. That's what keep when I thought it.
You want a motion?
Love.
Yeah. Do you want this?
Yeah, we've talked about it a long time.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you guys want to, you know, like, oh yes, please, cause I really don't want my horns or pickings. I'm saying you're too, that, you know, we're good.
It's probably wrong, it's a lot.
Well, Michelle's gonna work on that. No. No, I. So we're gonna start at thirty twenty.
Would that include the area over there as well?
Yes.
Seating for you guys.
Each other can do this, how the way it's gonna go is it's gonna go angle kind of that way, this way, thirty inches away from the wall, you have thirty inches of space. To work on tabletop. And it'll be, I think, four feet high with a six inch lift for the names and stuff to go on. And there'll be plenty of room for the chairs. And then there'll be a add-on right on out here for the girls and the deficits.
And it'll be a band around.
What?
This is gonna be one. This is for ADA for this next election year.
To get back here? Now you gotta have.
You know, if somebody, somebody may need to.
Oh, sure. Before you get back here.
Yeah, or whatever, just. There needed to be a ramp on, so that might adjust the cost of building, but that's. The the courthouse one that comes around the backside, there's still a ramp.
Right.
And and thirty-six inch, thirty-three, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly, I mean, so a hundred.
Okay.
It may adjust the cost a little bit, it's not gonna break the bank or change the outcome of what we want.
But you are guys, you guys, do you think make those adjustments, so that it's easy to do this? This is.
Well, it's fine, we can we can pay this.
Right.
But tell me my question for next Tuesday, decided to next Tuesday. But at this price, change a little bit, maybe a couple of dollars, it's not gonna be too much. It'll be great, cause you really just talk about the backside, you have this front side, it's just six hundred just off the wall.
Stop that.
That starts to save the motion to table election.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Make motion. Second, please. Please, sir.
Table specifically the next Tuesday and just have a round and get some.
Alright. Um alright, go on down. Go on yesterday. The peanut circle stone tractor downfall continues. Michelle.
Hey, just real quick before Michelle goes, I love that everyone's tipping around, but you don't have to.
It won't offend us.
It won't offend, we can take a quick.
That's our cue. Thank you guys.
No.
Thank you very much.
And if you all don't have to be on Tuesday, if it's a couple of you wanting to show up again on Tuesday.
If you don't.
You wouldn't have to, but it'd be nice to, maybe we'll have a couple follow up questions or something. No, no.
It's next Tuesday. We're doing a work session.
What what time, four o'clock as well?
I thought you were talking.
Yeah, let me know, we'll we'll try to have at least one or two people here.
Yeah.
So next Tuesday.
Yep. Thank you guys very much.
Tuesday you get a time, I'll give you a call.
Cool, alright.
Sorry to interrupt. Michelle before the question.
That's alright. Um so mainly um Jessica, they need to help you agree, put the contract together. Um but mainly what I wanted to have approved is to have them paid eight hundred a month back fee. Um no additional cost to take care of all of our computers in in the office. That means they're gonna enclose our servers, they're gonna do monthly maintenance, they're gonna do monthly backups, they're gonna make sure that we're secure. Um take care of all of our updates, um if there's a problem. I have been using that for the last little while and they're super responsive, they come over and fix it that day, which is really nice. Um so I I just started out at eight hundred. Um that's a decision that I'm gonna turn over to you. Um it's pretty fair mer- fair. Um, it's pretty fair mar- fair market price for them to be on call and to do our monthly maintenance, which is about a six hour process of backups and. Scanning the computers for any virus and etcetera, and I put a lot of it into making sure that we're secure from the dark lab and. All of this seems a pretty detailed in what I'm asking and the eight hundred dollar, but it does need to be remembered.
What have we been paying currently?
So, each time we call out for the other company, they charge us a hundred bucks, even if it's just a phone call. So, there are days where our internet or our servers or something's not working, somebody's had a problem, I think one month we pay five or six hundred dollars, if not a little bit more. They're, I mean, they're literally charging us a hundred, hundred and fifty bucks a pop, I think, Jeff, when you got hit for your computer, it was a hundred and fifty, almost two hundred.
And by the time they get back to us, usually the issue's already been resolved, we get Tina or they fix it, or, and we get.
Who are we currently using?
We're using ATAC, but we we don't have a a monthly contract with them, and Josh is so busy with all the accounting stuff that. Yeah, it's not handy for him, and he expressed that he wished we had someone else.
Can we not wanna pull a year-to-date, the prior year of what we spent?
I don't believe so, but I I think we are in a situation where we should have spent a lot more. We've got piles of computer servers in there that are not in a secure environment and a lot of stuff that should have been worked on along as we go.
I I have no doubt that we need a contract sometime.
But this is where, um, what you ask for is important, I mean, to know exactly what we've been spending each month, and then to go to, um. Actec, I know Josh is small, but I mean, if they take a hundred dollars a month, maybe they'll, you know, hire another part-time person that does it or something. But we need to bid Mactec, I mean, they're currently serving us, but on an hourly rate, and if you just said five hundred a month, I, that's way less than.
That's per call, they charge per call out.
No, one hundred is what you said per call.
Okay, per call, it's a hundred and some dollars per call, but if you're looking at from when we paid them before, the thing, if you guys remember or refer back. This was before you guys were on council, it was almost twenty-five hundred dollars a month for them to come in.
Well, and that's, that's a good number.
That's somewhere in that vicinity, it was quite a bit higher.
Uh, we we want to for, I'm sorry, send the girls home because the computers, the phones, everything was down here.
Yeah, I I know, I I'm just saying, I'd like to have a couple bids, I, I don't know, um.
And I just gotta.
Well, well, we hope the girls will all call Josh, who doesn't even return their calls.
Or just a year.
Well, we don't have a job to talk to with them, right?
So, I mean, it's not.
When we were in contract, it was just so present to you up here, and he was present, and as he is busy, I think, and it would be two, two and a half weeks until we even hear anything of them. Um, and I almost fell off my chair when we got a bill, when I called about changing a password for our email. I did all the work and he charged just, I talked to him for approximately fifteen minutes and he charges two hundred dollars.
It's complicated.
I'd like to see.
Somebody charged me two hundred dollars, so. Anyways, I need to get more information please, but, um, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it.
And then.
Well, I'm just surprised that if if it's near twenty-five hundred dollars a month is what we have been paying, I mean, I've never seen a budget that high before. But that's why I just wanna see.
I don't know for sure.
Yeah, so I just wanna see a budget of what we year-to-date paid those guys for not really maintain us like this, if it is gonna maintain us, which is. Happy with the services, I just wanted to compare.
In addition, um, I think we need something, probably work from yours or visions, something in here for calls, fees for that, I mean, it just specifically says zero, so. I would assume.
Cause it is zero, but it's eight hundred dollars regardless.
Well, and then it says, any additional services not specified will be charged zero, so I'm assuming that's gonna be any on, any calls will be free, you know, which I doubt. I mean, there's, there's generally a certain number of hours that they'll give us for, um, well repairs. Generally, why the hours? They've been open, what, three times now? Better included, and then everything above is gone, if we have a major, major issue, generally, they'll give you twenty hours a month of on-call repairs. And then, and you love that sort of amount, it's something, it's just kind of big, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's something, it's getting a little bit.
Can we put it on the Tuesday?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't even know that I would write out a contract, my suggestion is, I think, is the council wanting bids, is that?
Well, if you go over ten thousand, we probably need to have.
We're not, this one actually isn't over ten thousand, so we're not.
This isn't.
Right, but if you look, but if you are, if you guys are wanting bids, that's that probably issue, what Michelle's gonna need to do is probably contact, there's TNet locally, there's one that's currently doing it. And then one or two firms over in Clameth, that would be probably where we would be looking and soliciting bids, so that's where it probably needs to be, so I guess. I'm requesting just so that I know what I'm writing up, and can compare apples to apples and help, you know, like you said, a service contract written up. Where, are you guys wanting bids, do you want a certain amount, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're getting you guys comparable, see you guys can make a choice between the two, then we can put a contract in that point, so where.
I don't.
Correction wise, where's the council thinking?
I don't think it's a bad idea for bids, anytime we're, we're looking at something contracting, we definitely make sure we're in the right.
If you, if you contract one out of Clameth, then you've got, what, an hour and a half, hour, four, five minutes.
So, just for an example, maybe that other call was separate, but this registry, registry that we got, Actec was three hundred and twenty dollars. So, that's why I'm just saying, if 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 we're gonna.
Triple the amount.
Show that it was much less.
But that's all the fault, they probably talked to us twice last month, you guys are talking about eight hundred dollars.
But I will say.
Plus, my computer just got completely hacked, and so I had to wait a whole, you know, I tried calling Josh, couldn't get through to him, then I had to wait and wait and wait, and we finally got TNet to come over. And it took them all of two hours to fix my problem.
Well, and I will say, because I do know we have nothing really in place, this would also be adding to that, we're gonna be more service.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's better served.
You know, like, we can block websites that are high risk or whatever using a provider, I just wanna make sure we're competitive and we are not spending more than what we've been spending. Not that the quality would be some level of that, but.
What was their proposal?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred dollars a month.
Maybe six hundred a year.
But you get it, I I I do, I.
I don't, I don't think we get by, we don't get by for that number, um. I'm in my office, I know we paid ready, and it wasn't even close to a hundred a month, and we, um, but we gave results, too. We don't even very often, in fact, hardly ever.
Where did you use it?
It's so good, um, way back, I have a personal.
But they work remotely, a lot of times they.
Yeah, they they do everything.
A lot of times, yeah. So, I mean, it just.
But your pay is part of your price ten too, if you're wanting remote access.
Oh, yeah.
So.
And and we need a lot of onsite work then to like change it all, everything over the security cabinets, it's gonna be.
And our wifi's not even set up currently, they've got to go on redo the wifi, so.
Well, it's, yeah.
So, again, that's, the only thing I need to know is how much we spent yearly last year, if we have that total, then it's gonna be easy to say, okay, we're in budget, if not, we're, we're kind of blowing budget a little bit. And it's, you know, so we just need to know that we're spending within a budget, and we're not great, and but I still think bids are always just, just the responsible way to go, to make sure you're in the ballpark.
Yeah.
So, can I suggest this for the council, ask Michelle, I think, um, Michelle should work with both Jeff and Daryl, kind of get an idea of what you guys are needing, kind of just kind of a general set of requirements. And then present that to multiple different places, and then make sure you can come back with bids for you guys, is that okay with the councils, we have a consensus for that, that way, you're meeting apples to apples comparisons.
Yeah.
I I have an issue, and I'm not gonna say it. You guys wanna sit here and argue over what we need for a service contract for our computers, but you're ready to throw six thousand dollars at CED.
At what?
At CED.
I didn't, nobody said anything about recruiting CED.
Now, the court is going, I didn't say anything about throwing that money there.
But, no, I think, well, this is also a contract and a level of service, the CED is one.
I've got a whole lot of data, it's.
But I would like to see, yeah, probably to make sure, and I would just like this to be a little more detailed, like, what's gonna be, how many hours are they gonna give us? You know, when our, because we we could call a lot.
So, so, Shump brings up a five point, and I, and I started hearing things too, I mean, eight hundred dollars a month is not a lot, ninety-six hundred per year is not a lot, um. But if we spent only two thousand last year, we're gonna make up eight thousand dollars, and so I'm just saying, I just wanna see what we spent last year, which adds up.
We don't have. Yes.
I did, I I did it, cause our budget's not even correct.
Yeah, well, I mean, we should know that we paid those bills, but it's not like Actec, you can look under.
I I did.
You can look under, address that, that, yeah, or.
I'll go, I'll go buy it.
So, so Tuesday, I I recommend, table this till Tuesday, Tuesday, we know, remember, when you sign our thing, and I don't think we need to go off the bids, this.
I can.
From the testimony that's been given, it's reasonable price, I just, I just want, don't want to start creating budget issues, cause we think we've been coming and spending.
I I got it, I got it, I'll do it.
All the problem.
Okay, let's move on, we've got a lot to work over. Uh, she needs a consensus to quit Vividly Consulting in a letter for canceling the contract with Vividly Consulting LLC for a website.
A consensus or vote?
Um, so currently, we're spending twelve hundred dollars a year on a website that is.
Enough said.
It's embarrassing, so I wanna cancel everything and bring it in-house, have it posted through GoDaddy, um, which is the next one. And it's two hundred and forty-six dollars for the year.
I would give you my consensus or my motion to.
Can I ask where we are, is Vividly one, we can do that, but we committed to a specific period of time.
No, I have a contract, we're actually out of contract right now.
Oh, perfect, so we're, this is.
Well, the month.
And we've also.
Yeah, so that at this point, folks, this is the time, you guys, do you wanna make a change, this is the time to do it.
We've also had.
She's making a motion, I'm gonna have a motion.
No, I made a motion.
And most of us.
Second.
Second.
Okay, yeah.
We, we, you know, I made a growing issue, sorry.
Oh, favor, aye.
Okay. What can I do?
You don't need.
Cause that takes care of two right of, right at the same time, I mean, I would.
Yep, so you want your F and G to all.
F and G, yeah.
So, I made a motion to ca- cancel our Vividly Consulting contract and approve GoDaddy. Yeah, clarifying that, to vote, alright.
So that's for F and G.
Yeah.
Alright, H, approval for town hall office staff to get Slack, cost per year for Michelle, Dawn, Donna, and Sandy is three hundred and twenty dollars, sixteen cents a year. Um, you can explain to them, but.
You guys want Slack?
No.
Okay.
It's.
I can totally advocate or what?
No, Slack rules, I don't.
Yeah, no, Slack.
I'm sorry, I read it from.
Slack is the best. Actually, y'all should sign up for it, cause then you can join us and get information from us, it's a, it's simply an IM instant messaging. So that we can share data and information, if there, if I'm in a meeting, they can Slack me, and when I get out, I know exactly who I need to call. Um, she can, um, send over documents to me, I can approve them and send them back, and I know it, that we have email, but this goes faster, and then we talk amongst us in the office real quick. And I need to cancel the, it's three hundred and twenty a year because it's now free, so, I I can, I, we signed up for, yeah.
It's free, I'm down for free, that's fine.
Yeah, so it, you can just.
But you really need an approval, or is something here's not there?
Uh, one, one question, is everything that you guys do in Slack preservable in the rules?
Yes.
Does it prevent public records requests for this and that, so.
So it makes it a either or, yeah, we don't have it.
That's, yeah, so it's like, so just understand, what's when it's being used, like, you used to work cell phone, and it's down there, it needs to be preserved, because that is a.
Public record.
Public record at that point.
Yeah, so we just print it off and that way we have timestamps of when the request came in, timestamps of when it was completed, so.
Right.
So, I don't know if we have an IT policy on stuff like that, about record retention, and what should be going over our internet and messages and stuff like that, but no, the county does, and we should kind of check on that. And if so, then when we use programs like this, that we make sure we tell people that.
Right, this be.
How is this social media?
This is what we're out there working.
So, who might call?
I'm sure they're, I'm sure.
Or this is.
I would recommend, let's get caught, if Darwin, can you guys copy?
I can get a copy, I can.
Let's, and then take a look at it, cause we are a little different than them, so we, there's certain parts that would make sense, and then we can also.
Sure.
Probably reject Clameth Falls, I'll be another good one to, so we got a couple samples.
I know.
It's just mainly information to protect ourselves, and it's.
Okay.
Right.
Like, don't put somebody's social security number or something in a conversation, yeah.
I know, in our employee handbook, it's social media, Facebook, um, all that stuff, but if you read our handbook, it states in there what we can and can't do.
Yeah, may only cover.
Well, that, that's one thing, but there's also, I think Darwin's point, it it it's, it's a policy for record retention, just that you remember what is there and, you know, what, how long has you kept it, things of that.
Yeah, it's a typical policy.
And what can be put out there.
Right.
That's a policy, that I changed.
Yeah.
So, am I checking up on that, or you?
I would.
Okay, thank you.
You can check up on me, then I'll check up on you.
I.
Just.
Okay, well, do we need to vote on that one?
No, we're not, we're not waiting.
Let's move, let's move on down, approve for two smart fifteen-inch flat screen TV hardware to aim, one for town council room and one for the town manager's office. Smart TV total cost is five seventy-one forty-six.
For two, correct?
For two and my one.
I know one thing.
They're ideal, when, like when O-Dawg came in here, instead of setting up that big screen, you can just, you're on the TV.
Yeah.
All the presentations.
So, we know.
I would put it over there in the corner, it's.
I'm actually gonna approve the purchase of two smart fifteen-inch smart, you know, TVs.
Most ladies, second, please.
Aye.
Yes.
So, go ahead, move on down, we're getting closer. Um, referral payment given to Dawn before to Brentford current with contract.
So, um, Dawn, we missed, uh, giving Dawn a memo, I have the numbers with the after totals, but I don't, I don't think we should say that in public, so anyways, I have those totals, but we just, she is to deserve some retro, retro pay.
Like a colon?
What?
A constant living, or?
Constantly, adjusted.
It's in the contract that they adjust it on, it's according to the union contract.
Oh, okay.
And Cola, she's off contract right now, so, I'm just trying to get her card with her union contract.
I will make a motion to bring Dawn's contract current.
All second.
Most ladies, second, please.
Aye.
Alright, okay, um, alright, schedule an executive council work session to discuss town hall office staff contract and compensations.
I'm gonna recommend we table that at this point, just for now, until we kind of have some further talk on that, because again, we have representative employees as parts of that, and also, they have a right to be here, so, or I think that goes forward. I think myself, Michelle.
No, we're just scheduling, right?
We're just scheduling.
Yeah.
So, can it be scheduled for next work session on Tuesday?
I don't think it's gonna happen that quickly, I think it's gonna take some, because again, we also, with union folks being involved, yeah, I would say the twenty eighth.
Twenty eight? Like twenty eighth to three?
Yeah, but also remember, those employees have the right to be at the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are, we know all the.
Yeah. Yep.
Cause we're just putting on.
So, yeah, twenty eighth at three, and then invite all those people to, to talk and.
Right. Right. And it would be under, I think, it would be under labor negotiations at that point.
Okay. Alright, oh, funny, um, I don't know how you say that, bridge to, bridge view, yeah, scan snap, one, I mean, fifteen hundred color corporate duplex document scanner. Costs us four hundred and nineteen through Amazon.
Um, I'm requesting this because we have a records organizational issue, um.
That's a good point.
And we also have an ordinance organizational issue, this will scan in everything from second, first, second, third levels. We'll get rid of all of it, all of it, other than the things that we are required to keep forever and ever and ever on end. Um, we'll scan them in, we'll put them up in the cloud, we'll put them in folders, we'll organize it, and for example, with the ordinances, it will all be in a folder. And you will be able to word search on an ordinance that you're looking for, and it will come up. Um, we'll also be able to do that with agendas, with notes, with contracts, with all the stuff that are in folders. Um, we will scan those in, we'll organize them, and then you can word search for them, we'll put them out on web, web for the public, on those that we need to have and public. He heard they can be paid rid of information, um, and it's really gonna help us get rid of those folders that have been with us since nineteen seventy-eight that nobody's opened and will never open again.
So, this scanner, it's doing all those things as you put it in?
That's correct.
So, it's different than the scanners that you have in your.
That's correct.
It reads the words as well.
It reads, it reads the document by words.
Makes it to read the document.
Correct. Correct, and then, and, and a searchable document.
So.
You can search, you can, you can search it by word or phrase, always you, you know, it's searchable as well, yeah.
So, and that's something that, like, kind of I've been wondering, um, in the past, we've always had our I T guy that managed our scanner copy printer, and possibly we can do that in the contract with Tina, that would be handy, because we do or do not have somebody current? For the Tishiva? Right, yeah.
That's their own company, they do their own machines, and it was the same with the last thing, it's totally two separate.
Because we're doing the price for profit.
That's what I've learned, we have like currently or not.
Someone will.
So since we're ordering this from the Amazon, and you would probably have that tech service, maybe mine, um.
This is ju, this is just the hardware part, the, the part that, that it goes to, that is the software side, that's a different application, that's something they're gonna have, that the I, your I T person will have to do. If this is just a portal to get it in there, then, then you're gonna have whatever file share system, whatever storage system it is going into, so.
It's gonna go into Dropbox, it will be, that will be attached to Dropbox, so.
Right.
I, I don't think there's a whole lot, I mean, it's pretty basic, it's like a simple system, it's just make sure we have, maybe add that in there, not the common.
Well, I can. And we. What I can do, which we have, I think you have to just, you have to break down, just ship it back to them, and then give them the warranty.
It's minimal, yeah.
It's a minimal amount that I have to give back to you on, except with cost, with like a additional two to four-year warranty.
It's usually like twice my dollars.
It's very small. But. That's all I have to say on that.
Well, do I have a motion?
I think I would feel comfortable, I was gonna look it up a bit, I'm sorry.
Give it.
Um, let's see what the warranty is. Let's see, um. Oh, it's on sale. Oh, my, you're a ninety-six right now.
Changes everything, yeah, yeah, it's just, it's gonna be two.
It's forty-five dollars for a forty, four-year protection plan.
So I think that would be worth it.
I think, I think so, ten bucks a year, that's on sale for three ninety-six, and we could have it, right?
I hope. Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, it's gonna help, uh, we'll be eliminating file cabinets, file cabinets, file cabinets.
I assume you have prime access already, right?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're making a motion of this.
I think I need a motion pen.
Uh?
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I have.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fujitsu scan snap with the four-year additional warranty in the story.
I second.
Want you to make a second, hold the favor?
Bye.
Alright, okay.
Alright, you can.
Sorry, do a second, it's, uh.
I don't.
It can't wait at the same time.
Council have anything else?
Bye.
We, we don't have anything to do?
I don't think so.
No, we can't.
Yeah, that's, that's scheduling for later, so.
Okay. If nobody has anything else, then we will adjourn the meeting at five fifteen.